Go ahead and call us to order the Squim City Council, but we'll wait a few minutes here as more people make their way in. Please follow them. We'll go ahead and move on to the Pledge of Legion, so if everybody could please stand.
... to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If the city clerk could please take roll call.
Counselor Kelly Berger.
Here.
Counselor Dan Butler.
Here.
Counselor Vicki Lowe.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Rachel Anderson.
Present.
Mayor Brandon Janice. Counselor Harmony Rutter.
Here.
Counselor Nicole Hartman.
Here.
Is there any changes to the final agenda?
I move to approve the final agenda.
I'll second that. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Anything further from council? All right, see, and then the agenda passes. All right. All right. There's no ceremonial. We'll give the court just a moment here before we do public comment. All right, item six, public comment, as this is limited public forum. Individuals providing public comment must not disrupt or otherwise impede the orderly conduct of the meeting. As this is not a forum for hate speech, the city of Squim supports the public's First Amendment right to free speech, but it does not support hate speech, and speakers are expected to be courteous and refrain from making hateful comments, sounds, or remarks. And any offensive words or and conduct shared by the public do not reflect the city's values. The city of Squim stands firmness committed to being an inclusive community and rejects discrimination of any kind. And just to remind the audience, please refrain from any noise or sounds while people are making public remarks, and please make your remarks to the chair. City clerk?
For individuals attending in person, please take a moment to silence your cellphones. I will collect the public comment signing sheet shortly. If you wish to comment, please sign up now. Each person will have three minutes to speak on any topic, and there will be a timer visible on the screen. A total of 30 minutes or 10 speakers will be permitted for public comment. Please state your name if you are representing an organization and your city of residence. And no one has signed up for remote public comment this evening, so just be in person.
I'll need council to approve. Typically, we only allow 10, but we have 15 speakers, so if council wants to approve the extra. We have 15 speakers, but we only have 10 slots. Is it okay for council?
You need a motion for that?
Okay.
Our first speaker for tonight is Justin Greider.
Mayor, councilors, thank you for having me tonight. I am Justin Greider, Fire Chief for Clougham County Fire District III, which encompasses the city of Squim. I am also a resident of the city of Squim as well. I just wanted to come in tonight as the fire district to let you know the stance of the fire districts when it comes to fireworks. I know that's a big topic for tonight, so I wanted to let that be said. The fire district is a proponent of a public display where we have folks gather and watch a display to safe distance. It keeps the private displays down to a minimum in theory, right? We respond more to brush fires, fingers that get blown off from people using their own fireworks inappropriately. Those keep them, keep us rolling. The public display doesn't keep us. We have a fire engine. We have an ambulance that's standing by on scene, take care of it, and mitigate anything. But it's a safer display to have. We don't have a stance whether it's in or out of the city limits. We just know that we encompass the whole city, right? And so I just wanted to come out and share our stance on the fire district for the fireworks displays. So thank you.
Our next speaker is Susan Griffin.
My name is Susan Griffin, and I live in Squim. I'm here tonight to continue with the request to city council to discontinue all commercial fireworks shows within the city limits. Tonight, I would like to address several issues contained in the staff report titled Independence Day Fireworks. Tonight, we have presented council with a letter from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service from the Migratory Birds and Habitat Program, which details federal guidelines and compliance recommendations. Activities that bring up compliance issues for the city are the high-pressure streams of water sprayed into nesting areas by the water tanker on fireworks days, and the several thousand visitors that attend aerial events held after sundown at Carrie Blake Park, which draw large crowds of spectators at night. Referring to the letter before council tonight, U.S. Fish and Wildlife states that although it's important to protect migratory birds from fireworks, it's also even more important to buffer wildlife from human activities such as spectators and launch sites. Video footage or critter cams placed near protected birds and nests could provide additional documentation. On page two, number two of the staff report, the city states that it used the WDFW Priority Habitats and Species map to determine calculations near the fireworks launch site. The WDFW Priority Habitats and Species map is not applicable in this case. WDFW has informed us that the PHS map does not display active eagle nests on the map overlay because, as a state agency, WDFW does not have regulatory authority over federal statutes and doesn't maintain mapping records for the federally protected bald eagle. This is the reason that the city didn't find the active eagle nests on the PHS maps, and the distance from the launch site was not calculated correctly in the staff report. Last week, we visited the neighborhood where one active eagle nest is located, and we were provided access to the nest area to take photos and measurements. If the city decides to send out a survey to residents, it would be important to include information regarding federal statutes, guidelines, and recommendations in the packet so that voters can make an informed decision. If the survey results don't reach the threshold, the city will be obligated to continue fireworks shows in the park, not following federal recommendations regarding wildlife protection from large crowds, placing the city in an untenable position. In closing, the proposed Squim Avenue Street Festival described on page four of the staff report seems like a very good alternative event concept. Thank you.
Darlene Shanfield.
Good evening. My name is Darlene Shanfield, and I'm representing the Sierra Club North Olympic Group. I spoke at the February council meeting about fireworks. I specifically focused on contamination of commercial fireworks. This issue is critical to the public events attendees, the surrounding neighborhood, and the city park's soil, water, and wildlife. Toxicity of particles emitted by fireworks. Our research has demonstrated that fireworks particulates emissions are more toxic in vitro than typical urban particular matter. Yet there was no reference to the staff Fourth of July alternative brainstorm, not even a mention about warnings being given to attendees. I did not see in this brainstorm recognition or discussion about fires. Not only was there a brush fire in the city's park and the fireworks reported to cause fires at the Hawaii New Year's Eve event that killed three and injured over 30 spectators, but previous incidents have been reported from Manila, California, Beijing, and Florida, and many times in the warehouses and factories of fireworks. As to the brainstorm quoted costs of fireworks versus drones, the figures cited are a real stretch, as is the claim that the Sunshine Festival has ownership of drone shows. A holiday celebration with a family-friendly focus does not need to endanger families. The staff report is extremely disappointing. I hope you see through it, and I urge the council to take steps to early and what is not a beneficial use of the city park, and indeed is quite a harmful use for obvious reasons. I urge the council to weigh in on the side of safety. Thank you.
Shelley Torrance.
My name's Shelley Torrance. I'm the co-director of the Squim Logging Show, and of course, I live in Squim. I'd like to address the comments from the February meeting. So I'd like to say that we've had logging at the logging show. We've had fireworks for over 20 years without an incident. I think at one time, a piece of burnt-out debris went into somebody's yard, but we have a cleanup crew, and the city hires the same fireworks people Western Display that we do. I reached out to them, and you have a two-page letter from them with their thoughts on this, and it also reads about the toxic levels that they were worried about. And it says, and I quote, "The American Pyrotechnics Association Standard 87-1 enforced by U.S. regulatory bodies specifically prohibits high-toxicy chemicals like lead, lead azide, arsenic, boron, phosphorus, thysonates, zecrium, and mercury salts due to their toxicity form firework compositions, making fireworks more eco-friendly now." The other thing I'd like to talk about is the eagles. Now, I didn't hear the distance. I just looked at the maps like everybody else, and the recommendation was 660 feet to 1,000, and we clear that. It also, in 2016, the Washington Fish and Wildlife deemed that the eagles no longer needed to be under the Protection Act. They are, of course, endangered, but no longer in the Protection Act. I was going to speak on the fire, but obviously, the fire department already did that for me. The gosling that was found dead. In researching this, like everybody can Google, the number-one cause of a gosling demise is malnourishment. The second one was predators. And reading down the list, nowhere did I see there was a recorded case of a firework causing a death. The public knows well in advance that our fireworks are going to be occurring, and that the Fourth of July fireworks are going to be occurring. They have been occurring since 1777. People have plenty of time to prepare sensitive animals for these events. I have horses, and I take precautions during these times, but keep in mind, when a thunder and lightning storm or a heavy storm comes through, it's just as frightening for the animals with little or no notice. Most of the effects that I have read say that there's not actual damage to the birds. Of course, it frightens them, but there's no evidence that it caused physical damage to them. It was just fear. I hope the council will take into consideration the thousands of people that look forward to this and continue it. Thank you.
Stephanie Day.
Stephanie Day, City of Squim. I wanted to kind of elaborate on what the fire chief had talked about in regards to fire safety for the Fourth of July, and elaborate on if we do cancel the fireworks on Fourth of July, what that would mean to the community. And what it would mean to the community would be an increase in individuals and families who are ill-prepared for a potential hazard to, irregardless of the law, discharge fireworks, increasing the chance of area fires draining resources from the community. Also, an effect of tourism. Summer tourism in Squim is very important. And to cancel a tradition like the fireworks display, I think will have an ill effect on bringing additional and needed tourism to this area, which would decrease your revenue, increasing the tax burdens on other citizens and businesses in the area. And that's it.
Denise Lapiot.
Good evening. Denise Lapiot, Squim. I just recently learned of the discussion tonight regarding whether or not to continue to have a fireworks display for the Fourth of July. I am here to say that I am pro-fireworks. It is an American tradition to have every Fourth of July with a fireworks display. And yes, it is an evening event, and it seems like the city of Squim is always prepared to handle the crowds, handle the pyrotechnics of fireworks. And so I am for continuing this, especially this year, because of the short amount of time to discuss this, to do something else. Maybe if there is something more with the drones to be discussed, that can come after this Fourth of July. But for this year, please, for the sake of time, for the sake of money, please continue to have the fireworks scheduled for this Fourth of July. Thank you.
Jamie Porter.
Hello, Jamie Porter. I live in Agnew, but tonight I'm representing Protect the Peninsula's Future, which is one of the oldest environmental nonprofits in Washington. You know, I have some prepared notes here, but it seems like this is a very emotional topic. People obviously have emotional ties to fireworks. Although I'm against fireworks, I do believe it's important that, as a community, we do celebrate these events. But I desire, and I think there's a large portion of the community that desires. The PDN did a poll, and 42% of the people replied that they didn't want fireworks, and then the remaining were... There were three different categories, but the majority of the people did not want fireworks. So it's important, as a community, that we do celebrate these occasions. But I think it's also important that we find a way to do it that's safe for everyone, that doesn't induce anxiety and stress. I'm sure you all have pets, or most of you have pets. There's people in the community that have PTSD, specifically veterans. And I don't think a fireworks display equates with a thunderstorm. They're two totally different things. Especially here on the peninsula, it's really rare that we get the kind of thunderstorms that shake the windows. But I know with the fireworks displays, my whole house shakes, and my dogs panic. And there's also people with PTSD that have similar responses. So anyway, I just want to encourage the council to find a way that we can celebrate holidays, but do it in a way that's safe for the environment, safe for us as humans, and less dangerous for the community. Thank you.
Donna and Lyle Hagan.
Hi, my name's Donna Hagan. I'm from Squim. And I apologize, but when I went and did the county, I just was at a meeting for the county in Port Angeles last week. They had every single one of us sign in, and so that's why I signed in. I don't have anything to say. I'm just here to observe, so I apologize.
Denise Irish.
So I'm Denise Irish, and I do live in Squim. So I just wrote my thoughts, sorry. Memories can make us happy even years after they've happened. Thinking back, not only my childhood, but maybe most of the people here, I can recall with fond memories actual penny candy, playing with friends under streetlight after dark, the smell of sheets drying on a clothesline, snowball fights, and playground slides that were hotter than an easy big oven, and fireworks. Not many of those memory makers are still around, but fireworks are. We're here because of the elimination, and our town is up for a discussion on fireworks. I will not discount the beliefs or convictions that some people here have that oppose fireworks or the right to do so. What I do want to point out, though, is that these are really difficult times right now for many Americans. Defunding or eliminating or cutting programs are happening all over the place. Why would we want to stop on any joy or good memories to be made? Please leave fireworks alone. It's only 20 minutes of magic and memories.
Carly Page.
Good evening. My name is Carly Page, and I have the privilege of calling Squim my home. As a working professional and a proud member of this community, I'm here to speak on this issue and stand up for the fireworks. For many, fireworks are a cherished tradition. It's a symbol of our country's independence, and a way for families to come together to create memories that will last a lifetime. The fireworks at the park, these are events that I think unite us all. It's a wonderful chance for families to connect, for kids to experience the wonder of a community event, and for everyone to feel the joy that comes along with celebrating our nation's independence and freedom. Fireworks have been... We've been celebrating with fireworks on Fourth of July for over 250 years. They serve not only as a visual representation of pride for the American people, but as a symbolic way to honor our country's history of independence. Beyond the personal, there's a larger issue at stake. I believe that this affects the future of our town. The fireworks shows in Squim, they bring people here from all over the region. This boosts our local economies. It's not just a celebration, but a key contributor to the financial well-being of our community, providing local businesses with exposure to showcase all of the wonderful things that the Squim community has to offer. I think it's worth noting that the fireworks shows are planned and executed with great care and safety. Taking the fireworks away, I think, would hurt the spirit of our community. It could mean fewer tourists, visitors to our businesses, and the loss of an event that so many families, hundreds of families, look forward to every year. As a longtime resident of Squim, I ask you to consider the importance of the Fourth of July fireworks show. Please help us preserve this tradition that brings our community together and enriches the lives of our families, especially our youth and our local economies. Let's continue to make Squim a place where we can celebrate our history, our independence, and the special people who make our town so great. Thanks for your time.
Rhonda Coats.
Good evening. I'm Rhonda Coats, and I'm a resident at the south end of Squim Avenue, so I think that puts me in the city limits as a resident, presently on the board of the local Audubon Chapter. I can't compete with Susan Griffin for laying out the law and the environmental impact data, so I would like to just say why I moved to Squim. And from Paul's boat, I came for the environs that surround Squim. And before I came, I was not a birder, but today I can be a backyard birder every day in my backyard at the south end of Squim Avenue. I'm glad someone brought up tourism, because I have a hard time believing that Squim, people are drawn to Squim as tourists for a 20-minute fireworks display. I do believe, and I think the data, you probably know the data much better than I, what drives our economy. We are known for having over 400 species of birds either flying through the Olympic Peninsula. Many of them are wintering over. So, you know, if we want to talk tourism, I tend to think that that's got to be a pretty compelling reason to come to the North Olympic Peninsula, to Squim. And many people I know move to Squim for the reasons I did, not for a fireworks display. And I get that it's emotional. I get that it's important, but I also think we have so many other creative ways to celebrate our nationality. I'd be interested if the city did conduct a survey of the citizens. I don't envy any of you for trying to balance all these interests, but if you were to construct a survey, maybe of 20 elements of why people are drawn here, and then said, prioritize your top 10. I wonder, and you had included fireworks display for 20 minutes in the summer, how that would fall in the ranking. Maybe that would give you a guide. Yes, it's important, but how important? Thank you.
Bonnie Bless Banish.
Hello, council members. My name is Bonnie Bless Banish, and I'm speaking on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Clougham County. The local league has had a long interest in water, having hosted the Story of Water in the Dungeon Nest, a public education pri- in the Dungeness, a public education project in 2019 and 2020, and now convening an active committee studying the future of water supplies in light of a warming climate. First, we request that local water resource managers act now to prepare for less water as the glaciers shrink and annual snowpack becomes less reliable. Water storage and water conservation by people in their yards and at area farms should be facilitated by agencies and businesses. We feel it's important to show how the proposed off-channel water storage reservoir would be helpful, though not the complete solution to all future water needs. We encourage identification of additional needs to meet future demands. Second, we are concerned that water for development is reliant on paper water rights without certainty that water will actually be available in the future. We request coordinated monitoring of water levels in groundwater aquifers and public reporting of the current trends. In particular, the deep aquifers, the third and fourth, should be carefully monitored and tested before being developed to accommodate future growth. Third, we recommend collaborative planning that addresses future needs and potential shortages and the needs for conservative water management. Planning should consider current data as well as future projections of water supplies and usage by all sectors, and should involve citizens and water managers alike. Ideally, the work would be guided by a scientific, non-political officer position. Thank you for considering the requests of the League of Women Voters of Clallam County. Thank you.
Mary Foster.
Good evening. My name is Mary Foster. I live in the Squim area and, of course, in the Dungeness watershed. And my topic today is real water availability and the need for monitoring water. We're seeing less annual water availability from glaciers and snowpack. And this results in less recharge to the aquifer system. It is important that we have up-to-date monitoring of water availability so that governmental assurances on the adequacy of our water supply for projected development and for agricultural and domestic use are based on accurate information on actual water availability. The last time that groundwater level data for Dungeness aquifers were published was in 2009 by the city of Squim, covering the area between Bagley Creek and Squim Bay. And it included three aquifers. At this time, the fourth aquifer is being considered as a new source of water for growth. But there is relatively little information known about it. I urge Clallam County and water purveyors, including the city of Squim and PUD, to contribute data and funding to update the 2009 hydrologic monitoring report and include water level trends for all four aquifers so that the public and decision-makers have better understanding of our resources and how best to conserve and use them. Thank you.
Ken Bearely.
My name is Ken Bearely. I'm the commander of the Squim BFW. One thing I do want to say, thank you, everyone, for coming out regardless of why you're here. The fact that you have a passion for community, I think, is an amazing thing. I do feel that regarding fireworks, a lot of the compromises that have been brought to the table create an undue burden on our local taxpayers. I've literally met with thousands of struggling veterans and have never met a single one that's suffered from fireworks displays. Instead, it usually creates a reason for many of them to come together. I wanted to bring up why we're actually doing this. So fireworks are often used to represent our national anthem, the Star-Spangled Banner, which has become a moniker for a nation's flag. The song describes the bombardment of Fort McHenry by the British Navy during the War of 1812, and the sight of the American flag still waving above the fort after the attack. Fireworks are powerful and symbolic visuals, a representation of the song's themes, freedom, patriotism, and the American spirit. They hold a significant meaning not only for veterans, but all Americans, and are closely tied to Independence Day celebrations. For centuries, the Fourth of July is traditionally celebrated with fireworks, and it commemorates the adoption of the Declaration of Independence, a document that laid the foundation for the United States' freedom and democracy. These displays bring communities together, provide opportunities for veterans to connect with their fellow citizens, and share their experiences and feel a sense of belonging and appreciation amongst our community. They serve as a reminder of the sacrifice made by veterans and their families, and the importance of preserving the freedom and the way of American life. Fireworks are an integral part of the American Independence Day celebration, serving as a symbol of freedom, patriotism, and community bonding. They provide an opportunity for veterans to come together, reflect on their service, and celebrate the freedoms that they fought so hard to protect. I believe any of our community have the same feelings. This year's the 250th anniversary of the shot heard around the world, the opening shot of the Battles of Lexington and Concord in April 19, 1775, which sparked the American Revolution. That was the moment our nation was born. You would truly be ashamed to throw all these traditions away on such a historical year. Thank you.
Alicia Dicer.
Hello, everyone. This is going to be an unpopular opinion, but it needs to be said. Fireworks are a part of the way that most people celebrate holidays, such as the Fourth of July. But these pretty explosions cause harm to people, animals, and the environment. It's just a fact. The loud noises negatively affect newborns, children, elderly, pets, livestock, and our wildlife. It's more than just the noises, though. Fireworks contain toxic heavy metals that are used to create the bright colors in the sky. These metals don't just vanish, they're released into the air as fine particulate matter that we inhale. And then they eventually settle into the soil, our water, and even our garden beds. For example, barium, used to make the green fireworks, is toxic to the heart, the lungs, and the nervous system. Strontium is responsible for the red colors that accumulate in bones. Aluminum creates the silver effects that directly link to neurological damage. Copper is used for blue. And yet, lead, yes, actual lead can still be found in fireworks. It's dangerous to everyone, but especially children, because it causes irreversible developmental and neurological damage. The toxins don't stay in the sky. They fall down. Heavy metals accumulate in our bodies, especially in our organs and our brains. We're already exposed to countless environmental pollutants in our daily lives. Fireworks just add to the burden. But the good news is that we do have the power to reduce this toxic load on our bodies. Choosing to not set off fireworks is a small but impactful way that we can take the steps to protect ourselves, our families, our animals, our environment, our soil, our water. There are many other ways to celebrate and have a good time. If we truly care about our health, our community, and the environment, it's time to leave the fireworks in the past. They are deeply rooted in our tradition. Yes, we all know that. Some traditions do not need to continue for many reasons. And I truly believe that we can all get together and celebrate, have a great time. I love celebrating our country, our freedom, and our independence. That doesn't mean that loud explosions need to happen, but I truly believe we can all still celebrate and gather and have a great time. Thank you.
And that concludes public comment.
Does anybody else like to address council that has not signed up?
Thank you. I'm Pepe Whipple. Pepe Whipple. Okay. I turn 70 this year, and I'm alive. I don't have all that metal, I think, that has fallen down over the years, 70 years, that I'm sickly and ready to die because of a firework show. Anyway, thank you for letting me speak. I came late, so I appreciate the offer. Thank you. There has been no evidence to back up the environmental disaster implicated by having fireworks at Cary Blake Park. I haven't seen any. No evidence of pollution, no evidence that birds are disrupted, no evidence bald eagle's nests have been compromised. The council and the people have not seen any evidence, or has any evidence been provided that I haven't seen? I've heard a lot about supposed conspiracy bird theories, heard about one dead bird, unknown cause of death during an avian flu epidemic blamed on the night before fireworks show. I've heard about supposed this, supposed that, but have yet to see evidence produced over the seven-month-long study that was done. Seven months, where is the physical evidence? Audubon suspiity, where is the evidence? Many, many cities throughout the nation conduct fireworks celebrations and drone shows and have countermeasures in place for the possibility of fire should that unlikely occur. If we all lived our lives to protect birds, there would be no hunting, no driving cars, because birds get hit by cars every day. No loud noises, and certainly no loud two-hour celebrations of any kind. There has been no better alternative location suggested other than Cary Blake Park. The speakers have not proposed any alternative city locations. The drone show costs three times as much, and in this economy, it would be ridiculous to spend three times the money. Obviously, the small group of people who want to stop fireworks in the city want to control the United States of America's fireworks celebrations in Squim. Oh, I've seen, I've seen the little group, how they try to take over Town Road. The council should table this request until evidence is provided to the public, allow the opposition to investigate, and do polling of all the public, not just a selected few. And I do appreciate the VFW speaker, because it does mean a lot to the veterans and people who have fought for this freedom. Thank you.
Oh. Anyone else? All right. If council, or if we manage to have something quick to say, if that's okay with council? Quick comment? Okay. So there's a word that I heard a lot tonight, and that's emotion. And I want to say that the last time that this council chamber was packed with that much, with a topic that held that much emotion, it wasn't as civil as it was tonight. So I want to commend everybody for modeled discourse and behavior here tonight on something as emotional as this topic was. So for myself, I want to again commend everybody for being adults tonight on this topic. So thank you, everyone. So that will conclude public comment. Thank you, everybody. No public hearing tonight. Consent agenda.
The items on tonight's consent agenda are claim vouchers totaling $951,361.03, city council meeting minutes from March 10, 2025, SMC 2.40 Civil Service Commission updates, repeal of SMC Chapter 3.46 Payroll Fund, the Claims Fund, Opportunity Fund Agreement for Reservoir Road Booster Station and Water Main Design, and request to waive competitive bidding process to purchase a used vehicle.
A motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Move to the second. Anything further? Any opposed? I see, and then that motion passes. All right, general business, 9A, Independence Day fireworks. Hannah.
Good evening, council and members of the public. Thank you all for being here. My name is Hannah Merrill. I'm the Public Works Parks and Events Manager. And we've been asked today to come together, talk about some of the things that were requested by council. And just to give a quick summary, if that's okay. City council requested alternative firework options, firework drone show comparisons and costs, and overview of Bald Eagle Protection Act federal guidelines. And to give some background, in 2020, the drone show was introduced at the Squim Sunshine Festival and was supported through the Lodging Tax Advisory Fund, or Lodging Tax Fund, I should say. And in 2021, fireworks became an activity as part of a fireworks event per request of the council at that time, and they were also supported by the Lodging Tax Fund. In 2024, the Squim Municipal Code amended the code to ban personal fireworks sales and purchase beginning in 2025, but permits professional fireworks displays. To review the costs, right now, the city has contracted with Western Display Fireworks, and the cost for the fireworks for 2025 is $19,000. A comparative drone show event would be $60,000. We have so far submitted one payment of $4,750. It's a quarter of the cost, and we would lose that if we were to not have the fireworks display this year. And then the later you cancel, the more you pay of that total cost. Per Squim Municipal Code, currently, if fireworks were to be removed from city events, third-party organizers would still be allowed to hold displays until the city municipal code was amended in, to whatever degree. If it were amended citywide or just for city events, that would be up to that process. Site considerations, Cary Blake Park and the Water Reuse Demonstration Site has been designated for this event due to logistical considerations, the access, the control of the area, and there is not another site available within city limits. And the city has worked to be in compliance with the Bald Eagle Protection Act. There is discussion about whether or not we are, and I guess I would say I'm not the expert on that. So we probably have to go into an environmental assessment or some sort of further study rather than me addressing those exact protections. The alternatives would be, if we were not to have an event that included fireworks, to replace fireworks with a drone show, which was discussed earlier, would be a greater cost, and maybe would make the Sunshine Fest drone show less of a anchoring event, but that's up to all of us to decide, I guess. To enhance the family experience, so have a July 4 event and just enhance the activities, so have more activities and focus on a daytime thing and not have an evening component, or have something completely different in a different part of the year, and have fireworks Independence Days celebrated by individuals and not have an event on that day, which would save maybe costs and having something on a holiday. Are there any questions? Or many?
I have a question. And I'm sorry, I should have asked you this in advance, but what about the, so at the Lavender Festival, there has been a carnival component to that as well? Or what was it, hasn't there been some sort of carnival in Squim?
In the past, the Irrigation Festival had a carnival.
Thank you.
And they lost the contract. They haven't been able to replace that activity.
What, offhand, do you know the cost of a carnival?
I do not.
Okay. That's a question. That's a question that I I think that I think that this opportunity is is an invitation, an opportunity for us as a community to explore what what kind of Fourth of July event we would like to have, whether that includes fireworks or not. And I think that opportunities for robust discussion and exploration of all alternatives is not only prudent for for financial reasons, but also for environmental reasons and for the making sure that we are all coming together with an event that helps us all have a good a good celebration, but also part making sure that we're protecting the natural beauty and natural resources and wildlife in our city. So thank you. I hope that there's lots and lots of questions that come out of this process.
And a clarification on the carnival, I think they have two sizes of carnival, size A and size B, and they're only doing the size A now because they can't find enough people to actually staff the carnival.
Hannah, thank you for writing this up and presenting it. I would agree with you. The Bald Eagle Protection Act information seems quite vague or even subjective. You know, if the if there's demonstrated tolerance by the eagles, seems like how in the world would we know that?
Yeah, I mean, to me, that means they haven't left their nest, which to this point, I don't think the closest nest they have, but.
Yeah, we just wouldn't know. And the 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 distance seems to be rather subjective in terms of half mile, one mile. And again, comes back to whether or not there's a tolerance by the nesting eagles and so on. So I would agree that we need more definition on that by subject matter experts that are that are objective to the process and not leave it up to a survey. And I don't doubt that those experts exist in the state with the region. But mostly just want to say thanks for making the presentation. I really appreciate your responding to the request to council.
It was mentioned the possibility of doing a resident survey, but what would that look like to ensure a statistically accurate? I mean, I don't want to spend $10,000 on a survey for something like this, but how do you ensure a statistically accurate sampling?
I don't know that we ever have. I mean, you'd go for as many, you know, residents as you can. And we do surveys quite a lot, and so that would require quite a bit of planning. But I think getting, you know, it's essential to get the public's input and to have some of the find out the preferences of our citizens. The survey that was done via the the paper was 284 people, and we don't know where they lived. So that might not be statistically accurate, but then I don't, you know, it would take some time to put that together.
Just a quick, when you were talking about the carnival, I had heard, is it this weekend, Vicki? Was it at the Irrigation Festival Dinner where they talked about how they got really close to getting the carnival this year? Maybe it wasn't. Maybe I heard it somewhere else, but they were anyway, sorry. So they were really close to getting the carnival here, but it was dependent on if Port Townsend could secure a venue. And because they could not, that's why we don't get a carnival this year. And so I'm wondering, like, yes, it would be so much fun to have a carnival, but I'm wondering if it's dependent on whether they get more than just one venue or one area for them to come all the way out here. So that's a that's a keep that in mind.
Following up on the survey question, I'm curious whether or not the high school has a AP Statistics class or statistics.
That's a really good idea.
I wonder if this is a project we could hunt to the high school and ask them to see whether or not it's something they want to do as a senior project or something.
I think that that would be a really amazing way to get the high school involved with the community. I also think that that would be an amazing senior project. I'm not sure what they do in stats. I do know that there is a specific curriculum, especially if that year they're offering AP Statistics, because AP classes essentially just prepare you for a test in the year. So it would be pretty difficult, I think, to do that if you were taking an AP Statistics class. With that being said, we don't always offer it. So also thinking of something to say.
Just following up on my other class will be offered next year. So I don't know, you'd have to reach out to the high school about that. It would make for a good project, like Leila said. I'm sure there's some students who would be really into that. So it's probably worthwhile to see if they'd be interested in taking that on.
Also, we do it for free, so.
We pay the postage. Yeah, and I fully appreciate it's a little late in the school year now to suggest a project for an AP class because you're probably about six weeks away from your AP exams. So but just to have it out there as an idea, something to follow up on rather than just let it kind of dangle at the edge of the podium here.
Or a scout project? Maybe.
We have so many wonderful, amazing community service clubs, and there's a lot of involvement with the youth just in general. So you could, you know, shoot that to our interact club, maybe we could help you with that. But if you want help from the school, I'm sure there's definitely someone who would be willing and everyone would love to help, so.
I just wanted to ask, based on the way I read the information in the packet, it seems like there was the fire, so on page two, it talks about the duration of city's fireworks show occurring on July 4th for approximately 20 to 30 minutes. Does, oh, no, not that one, sorry. The city has been conducting this display since 2018 and per. And then later, earlier on, it talks about it starting in 2021. So then was there a gap due to the pandemic or? So it just there were there were two start times for the fireworks show. It seemed a little confusing.
I think that I read that too, and I think that perhaps the mix up was that we've been having the drone show since 2018 and the fireworks since 2021, because there was questions raised about them both being disruptive to the birds. Does that sound right? Okay.
Thank you, thank you. I was like, that I knew there was something to that. Thank you.
I think it's worth looking into the distance from the eagle's nest, just as a matter of course, because you think about year round. It's not just fireworks that are creating loud noises there. You've got rock bands performing and there's all sorts of things. You've got the logging show apparently has a fireworks show. And so I do think it's worth confirming the distance on that. But this one event isn't the only thing going on there.
And I do, I know we do have a GIS guy, a map guy that can determine that distance. And so that's why I'm I'm wondering if that is directly where the distance information came from in the packet. It might not be, but with that whole GIS mapping system, it's extremely easy and accurate to determine distance from A to B, whatever A and B are. Correct? I'm pretty sure. Yeah.
And then it would be up to interpreting that information about distance and to what Dan was saying, the tolerance, you know, whether it is considered a, you know, habitat issue or not. And again, that would be outside of my pay grade to make that to make that delineation. Is there anything else?
I would like to see this come back to another council session. I think that there's still more research. I think there that's what I'm hearing, and I hope y'all are hearing that too, that there's a lot more information to be gathered and a lot more research to be done. And I'm not entirely sure what type of the whether we table it, I don't think I'm, but I see you putting your finger up there over there, Brandon, so I'm gonna stop talking now.
Go ahead. Let me catch Ricky's comment real quick.
Well, even if we do a ban, it doesn't go and infect for another year, right? So we would just be, if we did a ban and then said, no fireworks show, there could still be the fireworks at the logging show. Right? Does it, doesn't it take a year?
So you are thinking of the state law surrounding changes to fireworks. I do not believe having a public hosted display would constitute that unless you're talking about changing the municipal code to prohibit all consumer displays. That would be a different conversation.
I think it'd be really good to know more about the eagle's nests and distances and what we could do to buffer that. Also have lived here all my life and have watched the fireworks show, the logging show. I can see it from the alley. We have a treehouse. We sit in with my grandkids and watch it every year. So, you know, I'm really torn about this issue because I do think it's important to protect the most vulnerable. And sometimes that's not just people, that's animals. So I'd really like to see us to come up with a really good compromise.
Okay. So you got directions for the distance for the eagle's nest, correct? Show of hands, you know, you know what we're looking for, right?
Well, I I mean, that's an easy thing to do is a measure of distance. I think more importantly is around maybe doing an environmental environmental assessment survey because because a distance is a distance. Whether or not that nest is impacted is something that's beyond my scope. And yeah.
For purposes of the record, Christina Nelson-Gross, City Attorney. I know this isn't your arena, but my ears perk up when we talk about environmental assessment because that's probably a very expensive contract and council would want to be aware of what that would entail in terms of dollar amounts, if you're talking about. And I'm not even sure what this would be, but a I don't know. So if you want something less than a full on assessment, then council should probably talk a little bit more about what it is that you're after so staff can try to track that down and find out what costs would be associated with that.
Do we want options for next time to look at what we would like to see? Or what do we want to do here?
I would be happy with just some clarification on the distance to the bald eagle's nest. I think that would be enough for me to make a decision.
And is that, isn't that in the packet?
Well, it just sounds like.
Oh, never mind. Okay.
They want more clarification on.
Got you.
Brandon, to your question, I think we probably have exhausted our ability to sort this out tonight. So getting more information to Christina's point, what would it, what would it take to get a subject matter expert to refine the subjective nature of what was presented from the the resource that we have already? If that's a multi thousand dollar survey, that's one question. If it's, if there's a state or federal employee who sits part of their job to give us that advice, then do that research and find that out. So I'd like to know what what we're actually talking about to Christina's point.
Is that an ask that takes a while to get the answer to? Or is that something that is that something you could probably do by next council?
I can, yeah, I can make that a priority. And so just to clarify, to find out what the costs and different options would be to to identify the distance and potential effects?
Something more than just a distance up to an environmental study. Are you understand, is that what you're asking, Dan? Are you understanding that? So anything to environmental study, how much that's going to be? And options midway, that kind of meet what we're looking for, that you would find that.
Does any other jurisdiction find these guidelines from the government subjective? And how how do we define the the things that have been put in quotes?
I'm right there with you.
Yeah, so that's my question. And if the only way to do that is to hire a consulting firm, then that's that maybe answers itself. But maybe there's, there are some definitions involved, so.
I guess council, to that point, and I see that the Public Works Director is taking the podium. And I would just point out that I think if there was some things that were more definitive than that, then the U.S. Fish and Wildlife would make them mandated rather than guidelines. So just to that out as well.
Good evening, council. Paul Beesich, Public Works Director, for the record. I'm sitting in the audience, and I've listened to all the conversations, the pros and cons. I'm afraid that it feels like we're being asked to bring me a rock. But there's no definition of what this rock is supposed to look like. So we're going to bring you something you're not going to be happy with. It's not quite the rock you wanted. My staff understand this analogy and this story, and I try really hard not to ask them to bring me a rock when I'm trying to find something or get an answer. We can get you the information of how far away the eagle's nest is from the fireworks. We can do some additional research online, try to see what studies have been concluded as to whether the impacts, whether fireworks in a short term duration actually have impacts on the breeding, nesting, and behaviors of eagles. I am not really in favor of hiring a consultant to go do that work for us because it's probably going to cost us anywhere from $10,000 to $35,000, depending upon what we decide it's going to be. And frankly, right now, I don't know what you're looking for. So I can bring you the information such as we have, but ultimately, for tonight, really what it comes down to is Hannah presented the information on the history. We had spent some time looking at various options to give the council something to kind of cogitate on and think about. Our first priority is getting direction from council, whether we're going to have fireworks in 2025. As Hannah has explained, we put the first deposit down on, we can walk away from that and not have fireworks. That's your decision to direct us on how to do that. We can go ahead and do the fireworks this year while we do kind of a citizen's survey of our community to find out how does everybody feel about fireworks and bring that backward back to you. There are some ideas thrown out there, but when we were talking about this, we're trying to make this as simple as possible. It's kind of a bit of a litmus test or a temperature gauge of the community. How do you feel about fireworks? How would you feel about not having fireworks? I think going to drones at $60,000 versus $19,000 is probably something we're not going to bring forward and suggest because it's just going to be too expensive. So right now, we have time between now and the Fourth of July to have more detailed conversations about should we do fireworks shows on the public side in 2026 and beyond? That doesn't require a code change. That just requires us agreeing that we are or are not going to have fireworks as a part of our Fourth of July celebration. That's it. It's a funding issue. It gives us direction. The question on whether outside commercial fireworks displays are going to be allowed moving forward, that is a code revision, and that would require us to not allow and not permit them. Currently, even if we stop our activities, others come in, they can apply for a permit, and we would proceed with processing the permit. The logging show is the big one. I don't know if someone else is going to come up with something else in the future. But if we want to stop all fireworks displays, aerial fireworks displays in the city, then we have to go down that secondary path. First path, we decide whether we're going to have fireworks on our Fourth of July celebration. I do suggest, and we suggest, that we do an assessment of our community. Should we decide not to do that as a group, then let's just stop doing them. Okay, six to one, half dozen the other, there's no place else to do them. The community should be speaking out to us on that. A big, broad chunk of the community should be feeding feeding us on that. Commercial, that's a totally different thing. Do we want to stop all commercial displays? Because frankly, where the fireworks are in Cary Blake Park and the Water Reuse Demonstration Facility versus right next door on the big open parcel that has a logging show, a few feet, if it's impacting the eagles, a few feet isn't going to make a big difference. It's either It's either yeah, it's an annoyance to them, but they get over it, or it is really disruptive to them, and we should just stop doing it entirely. We can do that amount of research and bring that back to you. So there's my two cents on what I think I would like us to do without kind of running and spiraling down this rabbit hole, trying to hire a consultant. And I think we can do that. And I would like to suggest that we work with Barb and look at what kind of social media and outreach we can do to the community and get more people. If 52% of the people don't want to have fireworks, we'll bring that back and tell you. And then you can make a decision based on information. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Paul, can I ask you one quick question, just so we don't have to have this conversation, you know, multiple times? I know you've done a lot of environmental studies and whatnot over your career. Is there a way to, I mean, there was conversation, besides eagles, there was a conversation of, is there a sub environmental study? Like, can we, is that, does that even exist to get, I don't know, we would need more direction. Can, do you know enough about that to ask council what they would want us to go out and do relative to the scope of an environmental survey for this or not? Because I heard eagles and I heard environmental.
Yeah, I just want to be an environmental assessment, as it was spoken about before, is not really the path forward, moving forward that we I'd recommend. Environmental assessment is usually something you need to do in preparation for an action to determine whether what the impacts of that action are going to be. Typically, projects, major efforts and whatnot. This is not that big. This is basically doing an assessment of available information and doing some more research to determine how others have handled these types of activities. There are fireworks displays that go on all over the nation. There are fire, there are communities that decided no more fireworks. They've all done their own assessments internally while they want to do it. Environmental assessment is a very specific terminology, and I would not use that for what we're looking to do here.
Good. Thank you.
Okay.
Well, I will say I am pro doing the fireworks for the fourth on 2025 or in 2025, sorry. So I'm pro that. As far as what we do after that, I think it would take a group effort to get feedback from the community, just because in my opinion, hearing from, you know, what if only 30% of citizens answer the survey that wouldn't really be super helpful because it's not as many people as possible, you know, like if it was closer to 70 or 80% of people to respond? What else was I going to say?
Would be a great idea for a people's project.
We harmony. Sorry, I'll gather more of my thoughts.
So I'm wondering. So we've already received information from the United States Department of the Interior and the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife. And right next door to where the display is happening is the Squim Prairie Oaks, Squim Prairie Gary Oaks Restoration Project. And there's a lot of information in the packet that we've been, that we've all received from Susan about the there's lots of science that's already been presented in here. And we have state and agencies that have already weighed in on this. And so I'm, I like the way you summarized everything that's been said tonight, Paul. And I think that I think that what I'd like to see is I'm trying to, I'm trying to, I'm trying to pull this together. I think that what I would like it'd be interesting to go back and I don't have it here in front of me and I, what am I trying to say? A synopsis of what you said would be, would be a really good path forward. And I didn't record it. I can't take notes that quickly. But what you suggested, I like what you're talking about in terms of going out to these agencies and not, not trying, not going through an expensive analysis, but just really looking for what the already established guidelines are and what the study, the results of the studies that have been conducted by by the state or agencies. And there's also been some studies done in Cary Blake by scientists who specialize in birds. And I'd like to see more of that in a, in a, in a that y'all through the Public Works Department go through that and summarize that information so that we can come back to this conversation with more, more clarity. Because I feel that what we have right now is a lot of really good input thus far. There could be more input always. Robust discussion. I'm a huge proponent of that. And I want everybody to feel like they've had a chance to weigh in. But I really want to go through some more process of looking at what we already have. And whether we do, I think a survey through with good scientific statistical guidelines to make sure that it's in a good survey that we're that we're really surveying everyone in Squim, also a good thing. So what I want to, I, I, like I said, I really appreciate the summary of the discussion that you gave thus far. So thanks, Paul.
Thank you. I'll have to go back and watch it again on the monitor, see what I said. I just want to say there were two final things. The first thing is, I believe the WDFW letter that you're looking at was September of 2024. Is that correct? That's the only one I've become aware of, signed by two individuals. One was the area habitat biologist, and the other one was the regional manager.
That's right. It's dated September 6, 2024, by Katie Loschman, Wildlife Area Manager, and Shelley Emmett, the District Biologist for the Department of Fish and Wildlife.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, that was the one I reached out to Katie in the last couple of weeks. And after having reread that letter and said, hmm, do we have a problem here? And so I contacted Katie, actually, she was the first one to respond. And I spoke to her quite at length about the contents of the letter. And ultimately, was she, and there was no ultimate about it. We talked about it. And I asked her specifically, are you concerned about the way of City of Squim is addressing the Gary Oak area out there and the wildlife? She said, no. She says, if we continue to go forward the way we have been for the last few years, everything's working well from her perspective. So I think it's easy to say that if you stop any and all kinds of disturbances, wildlife is going to be better off. This is a given. It doesn't matter what wildlife it is. If we're not around, then wildlife acts naturally and behaves, behaves naturally. But humans are around. I wanted to make sure from her perspective, are we doing something wrong over the last few years? And the answer was no. We are watering everything to make sure there's no fire. We are monitoring everything to make sure there's no impacts going on, what's going on out there. The other thing I want to point out, and I've spoken to a couple of people about that relatively new to the community, I admit that, but that is a reclaimed water demonstration site on the north end. We use reclaimed water. We have created an artificial habitat for all those waterfowl. They are, no pun intended, they are flocking to that area. We're having thousands of them. And they are defecating everywhere. It is becoming a human health issue. To the point, we are now going to start using very passive mechanisms to try and help convince them not to spend so much time there. We have kids using all the soccer fields or the multi use fields. We have people walking their pets out there. It's carpeted with feces. The pond around Guy Cole, people are out there, even though we encourage them, don't feed the ducks. And wildlife, if you do, use cracked corn. I personally have seen people out there with giant bags just casting around. And they're like, there must be a couple of hundred ducks and mallards that come, come flying around them. So we have created an artificial habitat that really, we need to start thinking carefully about how we're managing that. Last thing I just want to point out is we're in the process of getting final permits for our West Squim Bay lift station, the sewer lift station. WDFW has identified that there is an eagle nest in close enough proximity. They're not telling us that we can't do our activity, which is going to be many months of large, noisy construction activity in much closer proximity to this. They said, do what you can to mitigate it and avoid it. Okay, so the one big thing is that there's a dead snag right across Forest Road that we're going to be looking at not cutting it down because it's a perch. It used to be where the eagles would nest. Now it's a perch. They've moved to a different location. I don't know, maybe a couple hundred feet away. So there are things that we're doing to mitigate, but even the permitting agencies are not telling us, don't do these activities because they know that as humans that live in the land, we need certain things in order to live on the land and to survive. So those are just the two final things I want to leave with you. What I am understanding right now is no final decision on 2025 fireworks. We would like to come back in about a month's time and get a final decision on that before we make another payment. And we lose that money if we decide to cancel it. But we'll also give you an information on how far away the eagle's nest is to the best of our ability, because sometimes it's really hard to get WDFW to tell us where the nest is because they don't want anybody harassing it. But we will, we will try and see what we can do and find it for sure. And then we will also do additional research to tell you what we are finding from others by other scientific research that's been done on the potential impacts of fireworks on, on eagles in particular. Does that sound like I summarized it fairly well?
Sounds very good, Paul. Thank you. And I would, I would suggest that the second meeting in April would be soon enough, not
Okay.
Not next meeting. So
Yeah, I'm not sure we could get everything done by next meeting.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. And there isn't, doesn't seem to me that there's that level of urgency.
Right. Appreciate it.
We've got, what, a 30 day cancellation? So by the first week of June is when it gets expensive to cancel.
Correct.
Or twice as expensive as it's now.
Thank you very much for your time. If you have any other questions, you can send them through the city manager and we'll respond back to those if something pops up later after this conversation. Thank you.
Paul and Hannah, would you like a formal motion or would a consensus be fine?
I think just like consensus, show of hands that everyone feels like we're going down a path that you're comfortable with. That's all I need.
Everything Paul said, yes.
Based on the conversation you had with Katie, that was, that was exactly what I needed to hear. So I don't, I don't even need anything further.
Yeah.
Thank you. But for everybody else, I'll give you
Yeah, I agree.
more information. Thank you.
Anything else on this topic? Dan, would like a brief recess. Is that okay for everybody?
I motion for a five minute recess.
All right, we'll take a five minute recess. All right, I'm gonna call us back to order. Move on to 9B 2024 Annual Public Records Request if I will turn over to Talina here as soon as we get a little quieter here.
Good evening, Council. My name is Talina Sandeney. I'm the Records Officer and Risk Analyst. Some of you know me, most of you know me. So this is, we do this every year just to give you a presentation on the public records that we saw through 2024, just to give you an idea of what that, my slideshow wants to keep going without me. So sorry about that. So we, this is a municipal code requirement that we present to you every year, just to give you in case, you know, if we have a crazy year and budget if we have a crazy year and budget issues come up, we can, we can start having that conversation early. So this is just a brief summary on what is the Public Records Act. It is RCW 4256 that governs how, you know, what our records are and how we are supposed to respond to that. And we are responsible with transparency and giving all of our records that we have to the public. They are the public's records. They are not ours. So all the records are managed by your city clerk and me. I do all the public records requests and records management currently, but Heather and I still bounce things off of each other and work together. We use Next Request for our portal. Some of you have used that to submit public records requests. So just a brief summary on how our records requests come in, can come in. We get it through the public records portal. They come in email, phone, mail. They can come in in any writing. Any request for a record is a public records request and it is handled in that way. So if you ever get one in your email, make sure you forward it to me. They're all, whether they come in, no matter what format they come in, we track them through pub, through Next Request. And we do all of our communications with the requesters through that portal. We're able to track everything and document everything as it goes. The certified public records officer, the CPRO, we create a task for the individual departments. They're the subject matter experts. They're going to know where the documents are. I don't know where those are at. And so then they do a search of responsive records and they get those to me. Within five business days, we have to at least have a response saying, we're working on your request or here's your records. We like to close them out as quickly as possible. Not always possible. I had one open for over a year last year. So sometimes that just depends on the scope of the rec, the request. All records are uploaded and tracked through the portal. We also enter our time so we can track staff time. And then a fulfillment letter is sent out and we close the request. If the requester wants physical copies, we print those, we mail them. Or they can come pick them up, or we prefer to do that electronically. We can also do that with our body cam videos that are often requested. So here's some examples of how our time was spent last year. A public, a police report that they just want one document, it's 10 to 20 minutes of staff time to complete that. They're usually very quick, don't require a lot of time. Now, body cam video, I just had one. There was 37 body cams associated with one request. Took over 10 hours to complete. All written communications. So here's another one. If they want, you know, I want everything between, this is one actually came in, between the Squim Police Department and US Department of Homeland Security. There were 6,900 emails to review and only 260 were responsive. So that took me eight, almost nine hours to do. So we get these ones, there are 30,000 emails. You have to read each one, each attachment. Everything has to be looked at and reviewed. So and then, you know, another one, four hours to review, two and a half hours of body cam videos. If there's a lot of redactions, just depending on what is in there, we have to redact. And then we send that to our vendor to do for us. So here's just how we process the body cam video. We review it. We identify what the redactions would be and we have to manually write down every time. So if it's from like 00 to 1.20, we write that down and what's the reason? We email LensLock with all of that information. They get it back to us. We have to review it again for a second time, just to make sure. Yes.
I have a quick question, Talina. And did you already say what a reduction is?
No, I did not.
Okay.
So a reduction would, there's certain information that's protected that we cannot send out into the world. Social Security numbers, driver's license numbers, juveniles, minors' names, bank account numbers, credit card numbers. There's just a multitude of things. And so on paper documents, it's just a black square. And there's a reason and we have to have a reason for that. We can't just black things out because we're embarrassed. In a video, it's pixelated. You can't see what is on there on the body cam videos.
So even probably things like if an officer has to put in like a passcode or something with their camera.
Yes, if they have, if their, if their camera catches that.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Even registered owners of a vehicle, we have to mute the audio on that because that information is protected. So there's lots and lots of things that we cannot send out into the world. We won't redact them for, like a parent, if it's their child, we ask for ID. We don't just put information out there in the world. And then lastly, we share the body cam videos with the requesters. Some wanted it downloaded and put on a thumb drive. Some are fine with just getting the, the link to, we can, we can protect the chain of custody that way if we give them a link and they can access it themselves. So here's just a few examples of some body cam footage that we did. One was a call for service. Two officers responded. There was no redactions required. But the total staff time was still three and a half hours. The, the average for a body cam is for every one minute of video is five minutes of staff time to review. So they get really timely.
And that's likely because of the back and forth and writing stuff down.
Stop and go back a few slides. Yes. So, yeah. Another one, we had multiple officers respond to a hit and run. 10 body cam videos ranging from three minutes to an hour and 17 minutes, took over six hours. And then obviously the DUIs, we get a lot of registrations and driver's licenses and those require a lot of redactions. So that one for seven videos took over 10 hours. Yes.
And are these requests that are coming in from members of the public or these, are, are you also then, so requests that come in from other agencies or those are all included?
Yeah, agencies, the public, neighbors who just want to know what happened at their neighbor's house, parents, just a multitude of things.
Sorry, I just want to interject one thing. So certain agencies who have investigatory purposes, right? They can have their records processed outside of the public records system. Like for example, if, is it DSHS? Who?
DCYF, various places.
Yeah, if they are investigating, say, a vulnerable adult abuse situation or something like that, it would not go through this process. So what we typically ask them, and Talina will correct me if I misstate, is that when an agency tells us they want it for that purpose, we typically ask them, under what statute are they relying upon to get this outside of the records, public records process? If they give that to us and it checks out, they avoid that public records process. There are a certain number of agencies though, who either don't have that authority or just don't choose to use that process. And so then we will treat it as a public records request.
Yeah, there's a few exceptions, like Christina pointed out, that, that we do just send them directly to the police department and tell them that as an interagency request, they can do that. But there's, those are fewer than the rest of the requests. We usually get attorneys. I mean, we get, you know, there was somebody who was involved in an accident, personal injury attorney. We get, we see them all. This is the comparison for the last five years of our public records requests. You can see we're pretty consistent as far as total requests. You can see the PD is usually the highest total of requests we have. But you'll see that this year, we actually did have a little bit of an uptick from last year of the other departments. And that's all other departments. That would be Public Works, DCD, Finance, HR, IT, Legal. So that's, we just separate that, the PD ones. So you can just see that the bulk of the requests are going to be Police Department.
Oh, go ahead. So sorry, before you move on. And then I was just wondering, I think, so again, what year were the body worn cameras introduced that was?
That was early or late in 2023.
Okay, great, thank you. And then I just was, I think it'd be really interesting, I'm just going to say this out loud, really interesting to see how in the 2023 and 2024 data, how many of those requests involve the camera bit, just curiosity. But thank you.
Yeah. This is the cost breakdown of staff time for all of the public records requests we had last year. As you see, clerk and legal, we do the bulk of all of the requests, just because we get them, we process them, we do a task to the other department, they get the records and then we do majority of the redactions reviewing. So, and then PD has the second, they just, they are able to, their requests are like an incident report or a case report for a lot of them. So we did spend eight, 484 and three quarter hours last year just working on public records requests. So this is some highlights that we had from last year. Requests are being processed way more efficiently in public, in Next Request. In our previous program that we used, I would do, spend six hours doing redactions and it would lose them. And then I would have to redo them sometimes two or three times. So this new program that we're using, that is not happening. And so we are not seeing as many hiccups as we were previously. And we're charging now, as of January 1st of last year, we are consistently charging requesters for if they want paper copies, we charge over 50 pages. It's 15 cents a page. If they want electronic copies, anything over 40, we charge five cents for every four. So, and then body cam, if they're not an involved party, we charge 75 cents a minute of our staff time to review those. So we are, we did go up from an average, I think we were at $13 one last year maybe to $259 this last, or in 2023 and 24. And we're able to redirect people using our Laserfish, our electronic records portal, and now the permitting portal. We're able to push people off and say, hey, go here and see if this satisfies your request. If not, if they still come back and say, I want those, I provide them. That's just what we have to do. But we can, we've had, I've successfully deflected a lot of people in using our portals. And we're getting more and more things in Laserfish all the time. So that's exciting. And so the what to expect for this year, we're going to continue that self-service ability using the various portals that we have. Rumor has it, PD is going to be rolling out dash cam cameras as well. So that may, we may see an uptick in our, just our processing of our camera footage, but it didn't, and I don't want to jinx it, so I'm not going to say it. But we just, we're, it's, it's really, yeah, thank you. I've been jinxing us a lot lately, so I'm just not going to do it. And then just, we may see an increase of staff time processing those, those camera footage for the, for the in-car dash cams. So that was my presentation. Thank you for your guys' time. Does anybody have any further questions? Happy to help or?
I guess I have a logistical question.
Yes.
That you might not know the answer to, and that's okay. I'm curious, because so much staff time is spent on public records. At what point would operations look into another FTE?
That is above my pay grade. And that would be Christina.
That is exactly why we present this information to you. And just so council is aware that if during, you know, our ongoing conversations with Heather and with Talina, where, you know, the, the day-to-day struggles to keep up with all of their other work were becoming problematic. We would be here asking council or just, you know, saying, hey, we would really like council to seriously consider an FTE in the upcoming budget for these reasons. And so this, you know, absent a specific request from us in this, then we appreciate council support and, and inquiries as always. But we would definitely be forthcoming in making that request to council as part of this presentation.
Yes, currently I can keep up for most of the time. So, yeah. So any other questions? I know none.
Thank you for this. It's really clear and well done. Some summary of this might be really beneficial to have more accessible to the public. I don't know if that'd be in the newsletter or something that would just raise public awareness of the work that we're doing. Not because we have to, not with that kind of a tone, but because we want to be responsive to people's requests. But also show what it costs to be responsive to people's requests.
So we could do a fact sheet on that to explain the process and put some links in there and whatnot. And I will say, as you know, I'm a fan of software and technology and that has helped a lot, not only in public records, but if you talk to Heather about where we were a couple of years ago, your support of all things of this whole, the whole, you know, agenda, listing and planning and recording and all that has just been, saved tons of time and tons of money and brought all the efficiencies that you would hope to get in a return on investment with technology. So that's been really helpful and we hope to continue that.
All right, anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, 9C, junior taxing districts, Heather.
Let me get my document pulled up here a second. So at the February 10th meeting, council asked staff to come back with an updated item for, under the ballot measures, 3.9 of council rules to allow junior taxing districts to submit letters of support requests. So in council's agenda, in the packet, was staff's proposed changes and open for comments, feedback, suggestions.
I just have a question about this, because I wasn't here for the majority of this stuff. So was the rule before that we could not take letters of support requests from junior taxing districts?
It was never included in the council rules. So council rules, as it previously was stated, they opted to not have anything to do with supporting or opposing ballot measures. It was their decision to leave it up to the will of the people, as it's quoted in the, as it states in the council rules. So this is still just only allowing junior tax, taxing districts to submit the requests, but it wouldn't be open for general public.
Okay, thanks.
And the rationale for that being that even though they're not necessarily in our jurisdiction or responsibility, they're, the impact of their services, for example, most recently the school directly impacts the well-being of the city. So in that sense, it's, it's, that's the threshold in my mind.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you.
I, I really appreciate this, Heather. This is very helpful and responsive to the comments that we received in that discussion. We won't, my assumption is that as a council, we won't necessarily be proactive in seeking junior taxing districts to come to us for support. But if they were to come to us for support, this would give us the freedom to respond. Is that?
That is correct.
How you or other council members are understanding.
Yeah, I, I completely agree with what you just stated, Councilor Butler, and that we can get the, the request for the letter of support and then go through our process. And then through that process, individual counselors can, as we did last time, voice our opinions and, and go through the process with the open public meeting and allowing ample time for everybody to come and make their opinions heard. And, and that, just, this just allows there to be a process for the process, which makes me feel good. I was, it, the last, when we went through this, it just felt like, ooh, we're, you know, it, it was.
Way to put it.
Yeah, that, it kind of made, it just didn't feel right. But now I think there, we have very clearly made a very clear process for process. And, and that feels, that, that is good. And this is, in, in the case of the school, very warranted, you know? We had a, an emergency situation with our schools, in my opinion. And, and I'm glad that we were able to come together as a community and have a discussion and, and that the, the school district asked us for a letter of support and it, it sparked some conversation. So, thank you. Good to have process for process.
And my only question was to clarify that even with this in here, we would still be subject to the RCW guideline.
we would still be subject to the RCW guidelines.
Correct. Just wanted to make sure. Yeah.
Sorry.
Yes, for the record, it does. Yes.
It does. Yeah, okay. I was like, what?
I'm ready to make a motion if there's no more questions or comments. Seeing any. All right. I moved away with the second touch on this matter and direct staff to present a resolution on the consent agenda at the next available meeting that adopts the update to the city council rules of procedure, Article three dot nine ballot measures to allow junior taxing, junior taxing districts to request letters of support for ballot measures in accordance with RCW forty-two dot seventeen A dot five five five. I'll second that.
Move, move and second it. Anything further?
I'm generally supportive, as you would expect, given my position on this previously. I do wonder, given the comments that were received, if it wouldn't be beneficial to allow a a second touch and a opportunity for public comment. I'm, I'm just, that's my hesitation on this. Does anybody else have a similar sense? It wasn't, the, the comments were not wide.
There is a motion on the floor.
I'm, I'm commenting on your motion. Sorry.
Yeah.
I'm discussing your motion.
Okay. I guess I feel like since it was on the agenda tonight, nobody showed up to comment on it.
Point taken. Okay. Thank you.
Anything further? Any opposed? All right, seeing none, that motion passes.
Thank you, counsel.
All right. Ninety, municipal code amendment, chapter eight point three six flood damage prevention, first touch, Christina.
Good evening, counsel. You have before you tonight the updated FEMA floodplain development regulations. I believe for the first time since, I think, the nineteen eighties, late nineteen eighties, FEMA has finally updated its floodplain maps within Clallum County and they completed them, I believe it was late last year. DCD staff have reached out and worked with FEMA staff to review our municipal code and review it for mandated changes, which is what you have before you today. We are required to adopt this by no later than April twenty-third, twenty twenty-five in order to allow there to be no lapse in the national flood insurance program. So what staff would suggest after responding to any questions council may have is to schedule a public hearing for this at the next council meeting.
Anything from council? If nothing, there's a motion.
Move to direct staff to schedule a public hearing on the proposed federal emergency management agency floodplain, a flood code amendments in the regular manner at the next city council.
And I second that.
Move and second, anything further? Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes.
Thank you, counsel.
Christina, you got the gaggle of them tonight. Well, so stick with you, contracting guidelines.
I apologize and to counsel for that. Yeah, so the contracting guidelines, as we do, we periodically review our internal guidelines and processes. And while a lot of the state legislative changes over the last few years have related to housing, they've also done a lot of changes to contracting requirements. And so in looking at those changes in the RCWs, we have discovered that there was some state law changes and that the two fairly antiquated resolutions that set forth those guidelines and policies are now inaccurate and don't fully represent the law. And so what we have before you tonight is those repealing those resolutions and providing the replacement with ones that comply with state law. Here to answer any questions.
If there's not the prime counsel, there's a motion.
This is pretty straightforward. So I moved away further touches on this matter and approve the attached resolutions.
I'll second that.
Move and second, anything further from council? Any opposed? All right, seeing none, that motion will pass. And we'll stick with Christina, concept, comprehensive plan, public participation plan resolution.
Thank you again, counsel. Yes, I, I am here with quite a few items tonight, but I believe this is my last one. So what you have before you is the City of Squim's comprehensive plan and associated adopting resolution. So while council is aware that we've been under contract since, I think, at least late fall of twenty twenty-three, there was a comprehensive, I'm sorry, a public participation plan that was developed last year. But it did not get brought to the city council because we were waiting on some data from the county, which finally got, sorry about the language, finally got finalized in November of last year. And then, of course, we had some transition within the DCD department. So all of that to say that while council had not formally adopted the public participation plan, council is aware of the various shirets and scenarios and public outreach that has already been conducted. And this document before you updates and accounts for all of that information and explains how we're going to continue to engage the public throughout the comprehensive plan process for the rest of this year. And so adopting the resolution that adopts, that adopts the public participation plan is a procedural requirement as part of the comprehensive plan. And we ask that you approve this resolution and I'm here to answer any questions.
Broken record, nothing from council. There's a motion.
I moved away with the second touch on this matter and direct staff to present a resolution on the consent agenda of the next available meeting that adopts the public participation plan for the comprehensive plan.
Second. Move and second, anything further? Any opposed? All right, seeing none, that motion passes.
Thank you so much, counsel.
Cook them with fire. Municipal code ten oh eight speed limits. Oh, come on down.
Evening again. Again, for the record, Paul Busich, Public Works Director. My goal is to get through this topic faster than a city attorney did the last one. Because I know it's getting late. This is a pretty simple action moving forward. There are two parts of the squim municipal code going back to nineteen eighty-five. Another one in nineteen, an action that occurred in nineteen ninety-four for adoption of the Washington State Model Traffic Ordinance. The revisions before you clean this up, as you guys, we've already adopted the Washington State traffic ordinance, we don't need to have additional language in there in our code related to those same topics. But it also does is ten point oh eight clarifies that the responsibility for setting the speed limits resides with the city engineer as opposed to in the police department. Public Works should be the ones doing the speed limits and putting, posting all the signage that needs to go up there. And then police, as Mike and I have said, we set the speed limits, he collects the tickets. So it seems to be a good symbiosis. And I can go through some more detail if you'd like, but you'll see that the old code in here has been struck out and we've shortened it up and made it very clean. With that, do you have any questions for me? So there's recommendation to the council, we can come back for a second touch, considering this is a relatively straightforward action. I always suggest maybe you want to move to wave the second touch and come back with an ordinance, but I leave that to council's discretion.
I don't see any questions or comments. I'm ready to make a motion. I moved away with the second touch on this matter and direct staff to present ordinance on the consent agenda for the next available meeting.
Move and second, anything further? Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes.
Thank you very much.
All right, Nick, come on down. Hamilton, we'll go on to nine H.
Thank you. Good evening. For the record, Nick Dostie, city engineer. Before you is the reimbursement agreement or relocation agreement between the Hamilton Scarsella joint venture and the city of Squim. Due to the expedited timelines required for WashDOT to meet their fish barrier mandate, they chose to pursue the bid build option. And this joint venture between Hamilton and Scarsella and WashDOT was born from this new process that WashDOT is going through. What this does is put responsibility and liability on to the contractor and away from WashDOT. This allows the contractor to not only design the project, but build it in a lot quicker fashion. As a result of the increased liability and responsibility, reimbursement or collection of work done for local jurisdictions that WashDOT would normally pursue on their own is now the responsibility of the contractor, or in this case, the joint venture. So this is an agreement for a WashDOT project with the contractor, so the contractor can recover the costs for the relocation of our sewer line.
There's nothing from, anything from council? If not, I bet you can't guess what I'm gonna say.
I do have a quick question. So so this is before us simply because it's our, because they're working on our sewer system? Or are we, are we part of the financial side of this?
We currently have a low-pressure sewer line that is fed from the casino and resort, Squim Bay Lodge and the Squim State Park. So that, those three out of UGA customers, those wholesale accounts utilize this low-pressure line that then discharges to Washington Harbor Loop that goes to our WRF system. So we are not part of the project per se, as in driving, but we are their work impacts our infrastructure. And so currently, the pipe is underground. It is still underground temporarily, but it will be hung from the new bridge that Hamilton Scarsella is building.
The Fish Passage Project's required utility relocation, for which we're not being reimbursed by the state. So like, we've had to relocate a bunch of utility poles and this is a similar situation.
Yep, part of the, one of the benefits, I guess you could say, of working with WashDOT is they say, well, if you want to have your utilities and our right-of-way, you get to pay for it. So it's we would otherwise be paying these monies directly to WashDOT had they gone through the normal process for the project.
Not seeing any other questions? Going once, going twice? All right. I move to grant the city manager signatory authority to enter in the reimbursement relocation agreement with HSJV as presented under this agenda item.
Second.
Move and second, anything further from council? Any opposed? All right, seeing none, that motion passes. All right, Nick, let's talk weights and fees.
So before you tonight, you have a revision to the right-of-way permit. So previously, even prior to this, when we had proposed the revision and redoing of the public works fees in general, the previous fee structure was based on valuation of the permit coming through. One million dollars or less, three percent. Over one million dollars, five percent. And that, that was across the board. We realized that cost recovery, specifically on site construction permits and clearing and grading permits, was, was grossly inadequate. We were spending a lot more staff time and consultant time than the permit fees could cover. So we restructured based on the historical times needed and consultant costs through other projects to be able to more adequately recover those costs. Inadvertently, since the right-of-way permit is the same application, actual paperwork as the site construction permit, that effort and that fee got wrapped into our right-of-way permits. And the structure that we presented and has been approved based on review time and inspection time was geared for large reviews for site construction permits and clearing and grading. So now what you had is when someone comes in and wants to rent a dumpster to, say, clear out their garage and that dumpster needs to be in the right-of-way, well, now we need to charge that person inspection fees, quote unquote, to approve their permit. So sitting down, we looked historically at what the effort was for the normal quote-unquote right-of-way permits, which are PUD utilities, aerial revisions through communications, things like that. What is that effort? Typically, it involves one inspection or pre-con meeting, about thirty minutes of review time, and another thirty minutes to process. So that's how we got the hundred sixty-dollar flat fee. So now, when someone comes in, whether it's, again, PUD doing utility work or Astound coming in to run new line on poles, or even someone coming in and they just simply need a dumpster for the day to make, that will unfortunately block the sidewalk. It's a hundred sixty dollars.
Questions from council?
Not seeing any, so I prepared to make a motion. I moved away with the second touch on this matter and direct staff to schedule a public hearing for the next available meeting and draft a proposed ordinance.
Second.
Move and second, anything further from council? Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes. Thanks, Nick.
Thank you.
All right, and ten, youth liaisons.
For the purpose of the record, this is Lincoln Forest. So good evening, everybody. Some important school things that are happening right now or, and happened. Our class registration is this Thursday for all grades, isn't it, Lila? Yep, all grades registering this Thursday for next year. Our junior prom happened last Saturday and was a very successful fundraiser for the junior class. And we have started the process of our executive ASB elections.
Yeah, also, excitingly, we have spring break coming up next week, so we'll get a break and come back Monday, the something, I don't know, it's almost spring break. I'm, I'm not, not there. Okay. We also have, oh, sorry, for purposes of the record, this is Youth Liaison, Leila Sandin speaking. I told him to say it and then I didn't say it, so that's my bad. We also have flocking going on right now, so if pink flamingos end up in your yard, you should check out the little bag around their neck. It's for the senior classes grad party. And then we also have SATs and ACTs testing and then further in the future, we have APs, but this week and next week, I think there's ACT and ACT testing, not in Squim, but in Silverdale and Seattle and places where they're offering it. And then Knowledge Bowl just went to state and we got third and that was a lot of fun. So that was this weekend.
All right, thank you. City manager.
Thank you. I think I will cover a couple bullet points on my report after we hear from the two speakers that are prepared to give you brief presentations. First, on the business survey. Barb kind of led that initiative and is prepared to give you a summary.
There we go. Good evening, council. Barb Panik, Communications and Marketing Director. I know it's been a long evening, so I'm going to keep this really brief, but we did conduct a survey with our businesses late last fall and have received the results from that. And I just wanted to share just a very, very high-level overview with you of what I think are some, some of the really significant results. In your packet, there was the full report, including all the comments, and then the executive summary type report that the senior management group got about two weeks ago. So this is just a few slides from that. Just wanted to review the methodology. It was a four-page survey. We intentionally tried to keep it really brief to make it accessible and something that people would want to fill out. We made it clear that it would take about eight to 10 minutes for them to complete. It was sent by mail to all of the It was sent by mail to all of the businesses that have a city of Squim endorsement on their business license. And that was sent by mail. They could also complete an online and the survey company that we work with followed up by phone. We complete, we got 70 completed surveys. The goal was 50 for a city of our size. There were cities that we they talked to us about that were twice our size that did not get 50 surveys. So it was actually a pretty good turnout for our size. And I was really pleased to see on this slide that we got a really, really diverse set of businesses that responded. It wasn't all one sector, but it was really across the board. Yes, Brandon?
Seventy out of how many were sent out?
It was about 1,400 that have a Squim business endorsement, but we knew going into this that statistically, these business surveys get a fairly low response. This was the first time, at least since I've been here, that we've done a business survey. So hopefully, you know, as people begin to see some response to things, that participation will increase down the road, but it did give us some really good feedback, I think.
And it included home businesses and soul practitioners. So it was, you know, people at working in their house.
Anybody that had a Squim business endorsement. So similar to the this, we went with ETC Institute, the same group that we worked with for the customer survey that we did a year previously. And so some of these slides will look familiar to some of you that have seen them just in the format. So this is asking businesses how satisfied they are with different aspects of the city. And the dark blue is very satisfied. Light blue is satisfied, gray is neutral, and then dissatisfied and very satisfied. And you can see that a lot of those responses are very, very positive about Squim as a the city of Squim is a place to be. Parking's good, the image of the city, parks, open spaces, attractiveness, the city and overall feelings of safety. You'll see those come up in a couple of other slides next as well. At the very bottom of this list is access to quality, affordable housing, and that is a familiar theme. And it will come up again as well. Thanks, Heather. So in addition to that, the question was what three items will have the most impact on your decision to stay in the city? Overall feelings of safety was at the very top. Quality housing, again, common theme, and then quality of life in the city. Those were the top three responses. So I think that's it's a consistent message that we've had with other surveys that we've done. And when we go to the next slide, this was really important because they said that safety in the city is really important and police services ranked the highest for the level of satisfaction that they have within our city. But not far after that, parks, street sweeping, cleanliness of public areas. Those are all the attractiveness of the city, how the city appears. And so all of those are ranked really high. So what they're saying are these things are important and you're doing a pretty good job on them. So I think that's really good for us to know and for us to continue to make sure that we maintain that high level of service. You'll also see towards the bottom of that list, there are some areas that they want us to work on. And a number of these do have to do with our permitting processes. And again, similar to what we were hearing in the citizen survey. So there are already work plans in place to address these issues and hopefully we'll see some improvement on them down the road.
I do want to just insert, we were, we didn't have comparison data like we did on our residents. You know, we had a national and Northwest, which was four states, and we didn't have this. But the leadership from the vendor who does this nationwide knows national data. And so we asked them how how we compared and he said, almost the same. So housing, I said, that's really one of the worst. I said, oh, boy, how bad are we compared? And he said, you're all, there's always the bottom one for all parts. It would be nice to quantify that in some way, but he said it's universal across the country. So that was.
Yeah. And it was also a conversation that we had with him about some of these planning and permitting issues when he talked about that they see that really commonly in a growing city, which we know that we are. But like I mentioned, there are work plans that are being worked on right now to help improve some of those areas. And then what city services are most important to your business? Again, police services, cleanliness, street maintenance. Those are the top three and those are things that they all felt that we were doing a good job on. So it's nice to see that, you know, what's important and how satisfied are you with the services that you're getting? So just real quick summary, and this was directly from our consultant, that businesses have a positive perception of Squim. They gave us high satisfaction ratings for the services that we as a city provide. And the items that most impacting their businesses to stay in the area for 10 years is the overall feeling of safety, access to housing for for workforce, quality of life. And their top priorities are police cleanliness and street maintenance. So that is a very, very high level. There's a lot of data for you to dive into if you want to, but I thought that told a good a good portion of the story. And I think one of the things that we felt good about was the fact that this reflected very similarly with the citizen survey. There wasn't like a surprise issue out there that businesses had that we hadn't heard already. So there are things that are being worked on. And this information is all up on our website and you can click to it from get to it from the homepage if you're if the public is interested in that.
Do you know, did they do any mapping to show? We saw the pie chart with the type of business. Did they get any indication of whether the responses came from like the core or the far east side or far west side?
I don't remember them. I don't have the full report with me. I don't think they did mapping because it is in the city, but they did. As part of the demographic question, we asked like what type of business, if they're a storefront or if they're an at home business?
Yeah, there is a lot more data in the expanded or the comprehensive report. We didn't pay, you may remember, we paid a little extra to have the software to be able to slice and dice the data because there was so much relative to the residents and so many issues that we knew you might want to be close to relative to neighborhoods or geographical area. We didn't feel like it was worth it in this case with 70 responses and them being pretty. We didn't see any really major problematic area other than housing.
All right. Thank you very much.
Barb, I'll remember to lower for you if you remember to raise it for me. All right. Second, please. Set up, I'll give you a quick overview. I think you've seen on my city manager report, the last couple of times I've mentioned that I was invited to the HOA, the Flora Acres HOA. It's not in the city currently, but I know they have had years of concern over there. I've been approached by the county leadership, by the state legislatures, what can we do for them? And they're not in our city, but we have been able to provide subject matter expertise to the team that is trying to help them or assess that. And Paul and Public Works is the main subject matter expertise that we've provided. So with the with some recent achievements and advancements, I really thought it would be worthwhile for you all to hear and get a current status on that. It's a great success story. Paul.
Thank you. Thank you, Matt. The good news is I'm not going to ask for any decisions from you tonight that I'm actually bringing you a story, which I think is a really great story to tell. So if you recall, Flora's Acres consists of about 55 lots, 54 homes. It's a Rhode Island that's surrounded by the city of Squim all the way around it, has been this way for many years. It is served by a one common well. It's a private well. They have a common septic drain field along East Hammer Street. They each have their own individual septic tanks that they have to pump. They're primarily retired individuals, a little bit older. Some units have transferred into other family members have been bought out and they are rental income at that point. It was primarily built in the seventies. I've seen ages from early seventies to the late seventies. The roads are county. The challenge that they have is that their septic system, excuse me, their sewer system, which collects everything from their tanks down to the drain fields is it's it's the worst I've ever seen. It is basically dirt that's still containing itself in a round, round pipe shape. It is rotted out. It has been repaired over the years and it is imminent failure. And when I started getting into this last summer, I had an opportunity to review the videos that they had done in their design. And the first thing that happened was the hair on the back of my neck was standing straight up because I wasn't sure how much longer it's going to last. We worked with the county staff. We worked with the homeowners association president and members. We worked with the Chamber of Commerce, who brought in the Department of Ecology. The challenge that it was at that time is that it's outside the city limits. So we weren't going to take on the burden, however, it was a burden that needed to be taken on. So we were able to work with the county and identify a path forward where they could accept a loan from Department of Ecology that was just waiting for them to apply. They kept saying the city shouldn't. We kept saying, no, it's not in the city. They did once we showed them a path forward that would allow for the residents to form a local improvement district to ensure the county got paid back because they could not basically ask the rest of the county residents to pay for this out of their their general fund. The big issue for these folks out there is depending on where the the lack of sewer, the sewer line collapses is everybody upgrading of that will no longer have sewer service to their house. They would have to have tanker truck come in frequently to pump out their tank. They are at the risk of not being able to use their water because that's going to fill their tank or their toilets. So it really is right on the cusp of a disaster for these residents out there. On the other side, their water system, though it's old, it is still functional. It is doesn't meet current standards. It has smaller diameter pipes. There are no fire hydrants, so they have no fire protection. And they could never get enough flow going through those older pipes. So as I indicated, this was an effort that consisted of a lot of different agencies and agency staff who came together to find a common solution that could be implemented. And once we got past the no, not yours or yours, not mine. We came together and said, this is a problem with the right people and we're going to fix it. And so I'm pleased to say that because of that attitude, Clallam County applied for and received a Department of Ecology funding offer to replace the sewer lines in the amount of $2.58 million. What's interesting about that is 1.9 million of that is what's known as a forgivable principle. Now, it, we have something similar on our West Squim Bay project, but it's only 1.2 million. I wish they were going to give us much more as a percentage, but they didn't. But the good news is that the only thing the residents have to pay back is $661,000. So the residents have been asked to form a local improvement district. They're working with the county on that right now. The county would work with us so that we would basically operate and maintain the sewer systems in the roadway because they're going to tie into our system. So they will become our customers. As a part of that, the residents said, hey, city of Squim, would you consider taking over our water system? And by the way, the Department of Health said, and we have grant money available to the city of Squim as a larger water utility to take over the smaller water utility. There's also a CB, CDBG grant, it's a block grant that is available to assist because the health has about a 1.5 million and our total cost is about 2.1 million. The city we could apply for, in fact, we're applying for the funds to replace their water system and tie it in. An advantage to us is we get new customers. We have residents, not not city residents yet, but there are residents out there who are not going to have fire protection. So from their perspective, they're going to have lower insurance rates. But we would also acquire the water right to the well. The water right to the well has value to us because we would retire that water right and use that as an offset mitigation for a deeper well over the Silver Horn site. So there's value to us in doing that. How much value? We haven't gone into yet, but there is a reason why we would do that. The interesting thing about this is both the Department of Health and CDBG grant funds are only available if the water and the sewer occurs one project. And it's because there's a value in having one contractor do all the work, dig once, not dig twice, not to tear up the road twice in a later date. So we're working on sequencing everything. If we don't get the grant, which I think we will, and the county will move forward with the sewer project. If it looks like the grant comes through for us, we will be, we will be on on point. We'll take the lead for the sewer and the water project because we're going to have an inspector out there either way. And it makes the most sense. We would likely look to see if we can bring the firm that did, private firm that the designed for the sewer and bring them in. So ultimately Flora's Acres will have a reliable sewer and water system owned and operated by the city. They're going to get about $4.8 million of improvements for a 661,000 payback loan. The drain field and well sites that they own are fairly good sized. And they have the potential to be sold to a third party to help the residents out there offset their $661,000 cost. The other thing we've been talking to them about is annexation. And this is where it will come before the city council for approval of annexation. One of the two things, two of the three things that that typically kill an annexation coming forward through us is you got to have water. You got to have sewer to meet our standards and you have to have a roads that meet our standards. So there's a possibility that the CDBG grant could go to building curb gutter sidewalk on one side. They already have the big enough right of way. The road's going to be in good shape once they do all the restoration work on this. So if they can do that, we're talking about having them start the annexation process at the same time as they're doing the design and construction. They would not get approval to annex until the work was done. But the beauty of that for them is that if they annex, then we charge them GFC costs based on in city resident rates versus out of city. If for the few you don't remember, out of city is 50% higher on their GFC connection costs. And they pay a higher 50% higher for water and sewer service. If that happens, then we could see that $661,000 go down to about $250,000, $300,000. And if they're able to sell the land, they may be able to come out of this hole. So in my book, that's a win. And it shows how agencies working together collaboratively can solve a very intractable and difficult problem because it's a private sewer and it's a private water. But these residents needed help and we all came together and made it happen. With that, I'm done. Thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I'll be able to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
Standing silence.
No questions, just very creative. Good job.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's such a win from a $5 million project for 54 residents or, you know, homeowners to 250 or whatever, just and that would be spread over like 30 years, I think. So it's just an ominous cost to folks, which is a great win. All right, I'll just take a moment and highlight that you all received my city manager report. Sorry, I had it done by 10 and forgot to send it until somebody came into my office and reminded me. I'm just going to highlight a couple of things. We I did get a email. It's not on my report, but from Devor today with some frustrating and somewhat concerning news. Apparently the Senate and the House budgets called for transportation kind of stoppage or to not be move any more projects forward. So it's still work in progress. Paul and I both reached out to him to try to get the details. It's still, like I said, work in progress, but there is signs that SIMDARS might be affected by that. They were talking about a six year stoppage on future projects because of the shortfall with the state budget. So Paul's reached out to Wash Dot to get some clarification. If if we can get to, you know, some design and especially a 30% mark, that might be enough to keep it going. So and of course, Devor is very close to the our legislatures down there, but more more on that in the next couple of weeks, I think, believe. The only other quick couple of items I wanted to mention is I met with Reagan. She's very excited about her bond initiatives going through a course. Anyway, it turns out that a lot of her team didn't even think it was going to go through. I certainly did everything I heard in the community. But they're now, you know, kind of regrouping now that it's gone through and moving quickly. I asked when would when they thought they would have a new high school or when that campus might be. might be done, and she said, within four years, which I thought was awful fast. And so I was thrilled to hear that, or shorter. There are a couple committees that, that come out of that bond initiative that they're looking for volunteers to serve on. So any of you, or a little text out maybe, but any of your friends or relatives or, you know, spouses or whatever, would, could take advantage of some of those, those committees. I think there's a bond oversight committee and a couple others that are looking for some design committees and whatnot that are needing some volunteers on. My last point was, and I put this in my city manager report, last two or three meetings we've had, it has to do with TIF, you know, we were totally transparent with us evaluating that as an option, but it was just an option, and we had to submit it, or we, it wouldn't have been an option, but it wasn't a decided upon option. It was one of many options. And, and we didn't have all of our questions answered, even when we submitted it, knowing that we could just withdraw it from the state. And we are still working on outside bond. We have another meeting tomorrow with outside bond council that is giving us some determinations that we have been seeking since we started this. I just saw it in the paper. You all probably saw that junior taxing districts and got quoted in there that it's not a final decision. But we are getting very close to looking at that and the pros and cons of all that. So just know that if anybody reaches out to you, it is work in progress, and we will be data-driven and, you know, look at all of the pros and cons of all the ways to fund city infrastructure, and look at the least impactful for the, at all concerns, including junior taxing districts and everybody. So it's, it is work in progress. I can talk to you one-on-one in, as we meet, or you can call me. But I feel good about the team that we've put together, and we're trying to accelerate getting to a decision as fast as we can, which is soon coming. So with that, I, there's just a lot of bullet points on that, and it's late, so I defer you to my report unless you have specific questions.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, committee reports. Anybody have anything? All right. Yeah, so last time we had discussion on committee assignments, and the only thing that we are still undecided on would be transit. And I think we held this over because Dan you were gone last meeting. So I think we still need to clarify what our position will be on that.
Mayor, can I add something actually to the discussion? I got late this afternoon from Barb Cox at the Transit, and they are looking into alternative board meeting dates or times that may work better for all our busy people and assist in allowing representation for best representation possible. So she's looking for feedback for dates and times that might work for one of you or a couple of you.
Well, evenings are definitely better than, you know, 10 o'clock. And so that's my two cents. So anytime after four, yeah.
Yeah, I would say same for me. Evenings or probably between 11 and 2 is good for me during the day, or noon and 2. That's when my kidnaps.
Just a quick clarification of there are staff members that go to those board meetings, and so I'm not sure how viable evening meetings would be.
I know, but there's staff to have to come to these ones in the evening.
True. I just don't know their staff very well.
I know. We're very busy people.
Anyway, I just wanted to put that out there for council's consideration.
And I did respond to Barb, letting her know that because of other committees, here are the exact days and times that do not work for me in the hopes that anything they do pick doesn't overlap one of those, because then they would be down another Squim rep. So it's just, yeah, I wanted to be really open and honest with her about that. And then, no, that was it.
I could, if it's on a Monday, I can get you the times on the various Mondays of the month and what times I am and am not available. So that could be another piece as well. If, yeah.
A potential option.
A potential option. I leave it to other counselors to take that on. But if, yes, Mondays, if, if that is an option for folks, I can give you a breakdown of the Monday of the month and the time of my standing meetings at this time. Thank you.
And I am really curious to see how their survey ends up going, just because these transit meetings, I mean, they've been the same day and time for as long as I've been on them. And so I'm curious to see if other board members, especially the county commissioners, like what kind of availability they have for other days and times.
So I'm taking it, probably leave it the status quo until we know more about what the transit board is willing to do in terms of alternate schedules.
And did Harmony and Kelly, did you guys want to send me times that work for you as potential options? So I could send that to Barb as like a, for your information, this is what could potentially work for other Squim reps. Does that work for you guys? Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
That, that's fine. Literally, I was just drafting an email to Heather, but it could be you.
It could be, yeah, me or Heather, just as long as Barb with transit gets the information. That's the important factor.
Mm-hmm. Cool. I'll just keep drafting this email and add you on.
And, and if it, for some reason, doesn't work out, I'm, I got a feeling I'm like a couple months away from being able to do it and not be bothered by my child.
Right, right. Well, it's, I mean, it can end up being an ongoing issue, right? Like, what if every single council member had a nine to five and couldn't go to any committee meetings? And so that's a future what if, you know, and having to find alternatives.
All right. Thank you, counsel.
All right. Anybody have anything for open discussion? All right. Anybody want to attend the April 8 planning meeting? All right.
I am available.
Dan said he would like to join. All right, next council will be at 4:45 will be a work session on Monday, April 14th, followed by regular at 6:00 PM. And it's way past everybody's bedtime.
Move to a turn.
Seconded.
Yeah, let's go home.